A poll of the orderly, huge level of 2025 regular city council meeting. Start the pledge of allegiance. All right.
......................................................... Next, we have the approval of the agenda. I don't have any additions. Anybody have any additions to the agenda?
Most of you approve.
Is there a second?
One second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consent agenda. We have the regular minutes from May 14, 2025, city council meetings. The financial reports, city accounts payable, May of 2025, city financial statement, May of 2025, and the liquor store profit and loss statement, May of 2025. Questions, comments, or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call of favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next is public comment. This time it's observed for comment from the public on matters not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments to two minutes.
Hello, my name is Bill Hellwig. I am an attorney with Frederick Law Firm in Cloquet in Duluth, and I am also the city attorney for the city of Cloquet. I'm very experienced with city issues, and I wanted to talk to you a little bit about, you have a upcoming ordinance that the city is reviewing, and I want to give you some understanding of the need for the ordinance and maybe some ideas as to what should be included in it. I would like to provide a handout for everybody, your honor.
That's fine.
May I approach?
Yes.
And I would also indicate that I am here representing six different residents of the city of Cloquet, 709 Birch Avenue, the residents of 135 Seventh Street, and residents that live at 129 Seventh Street. And so, in light of that, I may need to run over the two minutes by a little bit. But again, I'm speaking on behalf of six different residents. So, let me proceed. This is a map of the block between Eighth Street and Seventh Street, and it shows the part property in red is the property that is creating the noise issue. The properties in yellow are the properties that have called in complaints to 911. I've provided you a copy of a list of the complaints and which residents they came from. You can see on the drawing, the number of complaints from each residence is underneath the address number. So, this is not a matter of a dispute between two neighbors. It's a matter of a single neighbor who is trying to control the peace and enjoyment of all the properties on that entire end of that block. And to me, that's a clear violation of city noise ordinances, but you have a very big noise ordinance, and therefore, it's very difficult to enforce. And so, what you need to do is to be considering what you can do to protect the neighbors. I mean, they all own properties, and they want to enjoy the peaceful living in on their properties. And at this point, and if you look at the complaints, the music is so loud, that all of these neighbors have complained of windows vibrating, of feeling the bass from the giant speaker that they have outside through their bodies while they're inside their homes with all the doors and windows closed. And that's absolutely not acceptable. And that's one of the things I want you to consider in a noise ordinance, is specifically talking about if the vibrations from music are felt within the home with all the doors and windows closed, and the home's more than 50 feet or 100 feet away from the speakers, that's an obvious violation and should be enforced. In this case, the homes to the south, from the back of the home, from the back of the home at 228 Street to the back of the homes on Seventh Street, it's 175 feet distance. It's 50 feet from the back of the home on Eighth Street at 228 Street to the back of, or to the side of the home on 128 Eighth Street. So, that's 50 feet clearance between those homes, but 175 feet to the houses to the south, 150 feet to the house, to the back of the house on 709 Birch Avenue. So, these homes are all considerable distance from the speaker, but the music is played so loud. When deputies have arrived, they have announced that they could hear the music three blocks away before they arrive, and yet the residence keeps insisting that she knows her rights, and she is not going to turn the music down. And on times where the deputies have talked to her to turn the music down, once they leave, she turns the music back up. In one evening, when they went there, they found that she had gone to bed and went to sleep and left the music blasting outside because she is intentionally, intentionally trying to disrupt the peace and enjoyment of her neighbors. So, it's, she's not playing the music to enjoy it herself. And to me, she can wear wireless headphones and play the music as loud as she wants, but she chooses to have a gigantic speaker that she mounts up on a ladder so it's up in the air and points at the neighbor's houses, and that's the type of activity that, to me, is intentional harassing, and your noise ordinance should be considered in such a way as to prevent that type of activity from taking place. Now, there's, of course, there's special circumstances. Someone has a party, a birthday party or whatever, and it's during the day. There should be exceptions for that type of activity, but for it to go on every single night and go until 10 or 11 o'clock at night is unacceptable. Some of these, some of these residents say they can no longer sleep in their bedroom. They have to sleep out in their living room, and they still hear the music coming through the walls. And people with young children, that they want to have go to bed before 10 o'clock, and they can't get their kids to go to sleep because of the noise. And again, it's so loud that it's vibrating windows, and it's just sending these vibrations through the house. So, a noise ordinance needs to be crafted to, to take those things into consideration. I will say that this individual has been flaunting city moose-like ordinances, in my opinion, not just with the noise, but the fact that she has more than 10 animals within a small one-story house, and to me, and apparently she has had them a license, but it's a violation of the city's animal ordinance. Now, I know somebody told me that they were, that she was grandfathered in because she had that many animals before that ordinance was passed, but there's no grandfather clause in the ordinance. Typically, if you're gonna have an animal ordinance like that, you have a grandfather clause that says you can keep all the licensed animals that you had at the time this ordinance was passed, but through attrition, sale, whatever, as you lose your animals, you have to work down to the allowed amount. You can't go out and buy new ones, which apparently this resident has. My understanding is she's had more than 10 dogs in the backyard, in the fenced area, within the last three weeks. So, obviously, she believes that as she's, she believes she's grandfathered in, and not that it means that she has to work down to what the ordinance allows, she believes it means that she's allowed, because she had more animals than the ordinance allows when it was passed, she's also allowed to have more animals, what, any number that she wants. And that is also a violation of the city kennel ordinance. To have more than three dogs, she should have a kennel license, and to get a kennel license, she has to be on a five-acre parcel, but this entire block is four acres in size. So, if she was the only house on that entire block, she would still not be allowed a kennel license at her location. And the, I mean, I'm sorry, that little one-story house, it may have been nice when she bought it, but my guess is that it's probably a tear-down of the studs now, if anyone ever did an inspection of that property, and to keep that many animals in there, she probably needs to be inspected by the Humane Society.
Okay, the ordinances, we're gonna discuss ordinances after, so that's partly the agenda, so.
Okay, and so, again, these are things that, right, that you should be considering when you're looking at ordinances. So, I guess, with that said, if, if there's any questions, I'll answer questions.
Anyone have any questions?
No, some of these answers will come, as you stated, with the noise ordinance at the first meeting or consideration that we're looking at tonight.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do one question, not for you necessarily, but these 10 dogs and two cats, are they all licensed? Cats, I don't think, but dogs. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mr.? My name is Rob Bender. I live on Seventh Street behind the house that's having the issues. I just want to ask you guys to enforce the ordinances that we do have on record as far as animal ordinances go. These are not friendly dogs. I've encountered them in the alley, and they left me scared for my life. They've been, this is hearsay, but I have heard they've killed ladies chickens in town. I just heard today they have actually been inside the Federated Country Store over by us. And so, as far as the noise ordinance goes, I don't want it to just be about the music. These individuals have had conversations that we can hear from our backyard where our children play, and they're talking about dildos and orgies. They're making claims that I beat my wife every single day. So, hopefully, this ordinance can do something to address the noise coming out of their mouths as well.
Okay. We will discuss the ordinance.
I'd like to show you a picture, just of the screenshot I got on my phone. I can show you guys. It's a picture of a speaker on top of a six-foot ladder in the very back corner of Brittany and Heather's yard, pointed directly at our house. Okay, this isn't just a noise issue we're dealing with. This is plain-cut harassment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Here none, we'll move on to department reports, the county sheriffs.
Thank you. You should have received in your packet the May 2025 report for the calls for service and the self-initiated activity that occurred by both the contract deputies, the two contract deputies, as well as the other county deputies when the contract deputies are not on duty. So, they're broken out to self-initiated activities as well as below that calls for service. As you can see, there was 236 total calls for service that were responded to by the contract deputies for the month of May, and 72 that were responded to by the, of the other deputies during that time. Do you have any specific questions on the breakdown of the calls? They're broken down to extra patrol, traffic stops, business checks, community engagements, public assist, pay-for-service, and then medicals, assisting other agencies, and then just the general calls for service that people call in, not to 911 requesting service.
Questions, comments?
I just appreciate the amount of traffic stops, 71 total. When we have an influx of traffic this summertime, people will notice and they'll slow down. So, thank you.
Yes, I have received comments that they are appreciative along the business corridor, specifically to see the traffic slowing down when they see the lights out there, so that will continue. As an update, I did extend conditional job offers to four individuals for deputy positions. So, those are early on in the pre-employment background and whatnot, evaluations and things that we have to get done, but we anticipate hopefully being able to put all four of them on, again, depending on the pre-employment and how that shakes out, and then they'll go through the field training process. We're getting closer to having all four of the contract positions filled. But again, I will reiterate what I have before. We want to make sure that we get, you know, the right people hired. So, it might take a little bit longer on the front end, but hopefully, a long-term investment will pay off.
Anything else for Sheriff Lake?
Thank you, Terry Moore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have superintendent, city superintendent Phil Edner with the department report.
Mayor, Minister, everyone, members of council. Busy month of May, but we're, we're getting it. We're full staff now in both works crews, so that's really helping things out. Water department will start there. Water department distributed 6.6 million gallons of drinking water in the month of May. Still doing some investigative work on a couple of water breaks that we have in town here, so there will be, there will be more to come on that. Sewer Department Collection System collected 14.1 million gallons of wastewater in the month of May. First station service checks, we're gonna talk about that later in the meeting. It's gonna be a lot more detailed about some of the, some of the situations we have going on for other stations. Annual sanitary sewer maintenance cleaning program, that's, is underway right now. That'll be finishing up later this summer. Waste water treatment facility, the June discharge is a total of 25 million gallons this month. That's going currently right now, should wrap up in the beginning of next week. Still looking at other upgrade options for increasing capacity of the wastewater facility. I'm gonna be attending a couple of trainings this, this summer to look at some other options, very similar like what the broken-up program that we started, that was, it came from one of these trainings. So, see what we can do there. Streets and railways, potable filling is happening, almost weekly, road patching, that's, we did a little bit of that, that started here last week. How many plants are up and running, so we're, so we're doing our thing there. Forest and Cedar Sidewalk, that was a pretty good-sized project for our crew. That's, that's completed now. Equipment standpoint, nothing to report. Cemeteries, those are being mowed and taken care of on annual basis, on a weekly basis. Still plenty of variables happening there as well. Campground, there's nothing to currently report right now. And I think everything else we're talking about later. So, does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you. We have this for liquor store department report and special events tech discussion.
Members of the council, Mayor Murchelski, Mr. Straitor Owens. Yeah, so things at the liquor store, been extremely busy. Mari's doing a great job. We're still looking at internal processes. We're staying busy, making efficiencies and things better and some more smooth down there. Let's see, the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, the alcohol and gambling division was in last week for a spot inspection. We passed applying colors, so that's great. I don't have the official report yet, but everything went well. And then, brings me to the tents. We brought this up at the last liquor committee meeting. This is something we spend, we rent tents every year for our Fourth of July stuff and occasionally something else, but it's usually around $2,000. And I just thought, and Mari thought, why don't we get our own tents? Obviously, some other liabilities and stuff can come with that sometimes, but there's plenty of, you know, other entities that have their own tents, like the Chamber of Commerce or the Humane Society does tents in all sorts of places. So, there are some quotes in your packet, just some quotes we've got of some tents that we would like to purchase. Again, this isn't like a capital item. This would just be in lieu of renting something that we normally rent every year, something we would have and potentially, you know, save us thousands a year. So, open for questions or dialogue about it, or?
Which is the one that you guys are?
I would propose the two that are from Amazon, so the Green Party 20 by 40 and the 16 by 32.
Okay, do, they have poles down the middle, support poles down the middle? This is one of the sites I can tell.
Yeah, I guess I'm not 100% positive if they have poles down the middle or not.
Just so, I, I think it's good to purchase one. We do spend a lot in.
I believe they're very similar to the ones the Chamber uses, so.
Yeah, just so we get a, a good quality one.
Yep. Yep. So, I don't know if we need a.
I would probably go with the frame one, that takes the poles away from down the middle, and they're easier to maintain once they're up.
Yeah.
When would these be purchased?
Probably one for the fourth of this year. We would need to purchase them here within the next week, I would say.
Any other consideration is that city staff's gonna put them up for?
Yep, all stuff we would have to figure out. This is more for dialogue, I guess, than?
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you have storage space for them or something?
Uh, yeah, I think we could find space. We have a old building that's behind by the Little League Field that I think the Chamber sometimes stores stuff in there, maybe even their tents, I'm not sure. Or we'll find a spot for it at the liquor store.
I would recommend the one map is the.
What's sturdy?
The sturdiest one and that has, and the least amount of poles going down the middle, but if that's for support, then obviously you can't get around it. And some, when they get real big, you need some support, so I guess check into those. I do like the back of the side windows, just in case, you know, it's raining, you could put doors side up, you know? So, I, I like that idea.
I think they roll up, another, you know, one of the cons would be if the walls up and then it's windy, it could be easier to blow over. So, all things to consider.
Yeah.
So, yeah, any dialogue with it is appreciated, and we'll just go from there.
So, if we went by them this year, we'd have to rent again this year.
We would have to rent again this year, yep. And the quote is about $2,200. The quote you have in there was just for visibility. That's what we paid last year, so it's gonna go up a little bit.
So, basically, the rental price is what you could purchase two for.
Yeah, it's more expensive than purchasing two for.
Yeah, in that ballpark.
Yep.
Further discussion, motions?
I guess I'd make a motion to spend up to $2,000 on tents and pick the ones that need seconded up.
Any further discussion?
I would just recommend that if they can't be here by the fourth, we'd be out.
Oh, yeah, it would be.
A different, a different, yeah, but.
We can wait if that's the case.
Yes.
All right. Call of favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Quick question for you.
Yes.
Where are we at on the bottoms-up?
So, yeah, we've just been really busy. I know that we were trying to get a demo for the next liquor committee meeting, but I'll follow up on it.
Any other questions about liquor store? Captain Elton Library Department, IT, monthly update.
Yeah, those who have driven by the arena, the First National Bank Arena, will notice the new digital sign is up. It was just installed. Power was just ran to it yesterday, and now it's just a matter of getting connectivity, internet, and then programming into it, so it'll be up and running hopefully here in the next couple days. And then, working on some new DMV workstations. That's about it. I mean, a little miscellaneous stuff here and there.
Any other IT questions?
I'll assign the.
That's good.
Congratulations on the basketball coach.
Ah, thank you. Thank you. For those who don't know, I accepted the role as the head coach of the Moose Lake River basketball team. Nice. Team man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the city engineer, pre-construction meeting minutes and the monthly update minutes.
Mayor, did, did you have any?
Sorry? Wanted council to have visibility to the pre-construction meeting minutes, just for additional information regarding the development. This pre-construction meeting was predominantly between our city engineers and the developer. Our developer is engaging with the city engineers outside of our current collaboration for items specific and relevant to the developer's contribution to the development. It does provide a lot of cohesiveness, so that their collaboration, I think, builds efficiency into what is currently happening. I would encourage council to review Section 3 with the development agreement requirements. Those requirements aren't pertinent just to Phase 1 of the development, so they'll, they'll change as this project continues to evolve. But things are moving at the development, and construction is underway, so hopefully exciting. Pertaining to the regular monthly meeting update and the meeting minutes provided for such, there are a couple of items further along on the agenda that we will discuss relevant to the engineering meeting. If you have any additional questions, please feel free to let me know, but other than that, we'll be covering items within the rest of the meeting agenda.
Any questions? Monthly chamber report? Is anybody here from the chamber? Got anything?
With nobody here from the chamber, I did want council to have visibility to upcoming events and schedules. Within the council packet, you did receive the Fourth of July schedule for Thursday, July 3rd, through Sunday, July 6th. These flyers will be distributed around the city and posted on public boards to, for visibility. In addition, council received information on the eight days activities and festivities for this year, occurring July 19th and July 20th, and the Nine and Dine Golf Event that is occurring Friday, July 25th as well. Anybody with questions that are event-specific, I would encourage you to go to the chamber website. Feel free to contact the chamber and show the executive director regarding the events. And there's a lot going on this summer. Good stuff.
Any questions, comments? Will be on the previously discussed business. The Moose Lake HRA Hillside Mount West fire update?
Yes, so reoccupation of the HRA has been approached with a, you know, a phase approach, so to speak. So, Phase 1 was getting half the building reoccupied on the damaged side or undamaged side of the building. That did occur. Once the Phase 1 occupation, or reoccupation of the building occurred, we transitioned away from the Red Cross Shelter. All of those who needed housing accommodations were offered an opportunity to have hotel accommodations through the HRA for, to meet resident needs. I'm excited that as of yesterday, the second phase of reoccupancy was established, and additional seven units were able to be reoccupied by residents at the manor. That leaves the nine units that were specifically damaged by the fire and the water. And so, what we're looking at at this time is now transitioning from abatement and mitigation activities to reconstruction activities. So, this is the final phase of repairs and occupancy. The nine units, residents. The nine um, units, residents in the nine units that were affected are currently being offered accommodations uh, through the H R A for, to meet housing needs. And we are going to, as we transition now, um, as of yesterday, into this last phase. We will look at now getting units one by one um, completed and having the reconstruction work occur, and then getting them reoccupied. So, uh, working through that, if there's any questions, please feel free to reach out. I know there's been misinformation swirling, uh, but all residents have been offered housing um, accommodations and will continue to get housing accommodations throughout the remainder of this process. The Red Cross was absolutely fantastic to work with, uh, Carlton County stepped up with multiple departments and um, were involved and engaged the entire time and have been extremely helpful in dealing with this crisis. In addition, the United Way has set up a way to um, to donate, uh, if there's a desire for anybody to donate. The United Way is facilitating accepting donations and also distributing donations so that it's out of um, H R A process and our city process. So, uh, very helpful from the United Way, uh, Salvation Army was providing meals for, um, at the shelter, for uh, residents at the shelter, but also any resident who uh, wanted to utilize the food service throughout this crisis. That was fantastic as well. And uh, at this point in time, agencies are still involved, the Red Cross is still involved, uh, staying in contact with residents. The Moose Lake Food Shelf and Food Bank has been spectacular, uh, they are helping residents get their um, refrigerators restocked upon reoccupying uh, the building, and that's been fantastic. So lots and lots and lots of help and resources donated and processes underway that have have been a collaborative community effort. And so I would like to thank everybody involved, and we're gonna continue to work diligently to get the remaining nine units reoccupied.
Any questions, comments? Your thoughts, City Gardener, the name Bennett? Elm Avenue Beautification Update and the Tree Inventory Grant Update.
Council, Mayor, City Administrator? Couple of very brief updates, uh, we're moving forward on our um, grant perfectly. We're getting a lot of our numbers straight and the next steps are gonna be, the contract is gonna be submitted to you guys for approval and signature. So everything is going along perfectly there, um, of course, I wish we could have done it three months ago, but everything takes time. And so, um, yeah, that's all I really have for updates with that, I've been working with Madison, uh, with the D N R, who's the contract person, and it's it's all been going really, really well. As far as the tree and the um, Elm Street Beautification Project, we got all of our um, planters in that we got approval for last year. So they're in the process of being unboxed and we're learning about the soil that's gotta go in them and where we're gonna place them and all those things. And we have a plan in place to replace four of the trees that were downtown, there were eight, we're gonna replace them with four. I'm actually meeting with a couple of different nurseries to make sure that we get the right trees to put in there. And um, we're working with a couple of different tree services to get those, the the ground prepped and ready to go for that, so we're moving forward on everything. I know that a lot of people want the trees back, so we're working on that. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I pull discussion?
Yes, I brought forward at uh, last month's city council meeting, there was a request made from the American Legion, Post Three Seventy-Nine regarding uh, the city's gambling fund. And so, wanted the opportunity to gather additional information for council, that was presented in the packet. Within the, the uh, the Legion's initial request that was submitted, was submitted was for eight thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. What city administrative staff did in the background was um, put a value and dollar value to the hours of walking services that the city has contributed to the project already. Just wanted council to have visibility to that, that total came in right around thirty-two hundred dollars. Again, not an invoice, just a mechanism to um, inform council of um, the monetary value of contributions thus far to the project. In addition, I wanted council to have a snapshot of the contribution fund. Again, our audit has not, our audit in-house has occurred, we have not got our financial statements back yet from the audit firm, so this is an unaudited figure from the end of twenty-twenty-four. The uh, contribution fund at this time has a balance around twenty-five thousand dollars. I wanted council to have visibility to the expenses and and a history or track record of how those have been approved and facilitated um, from twenty-fifteen on. So with that, you'll have the uh, the description of what the expense was and the dollar value associated with such. In addition, at the top of the page, um, yearly contributions from twenty-fifteen on were also provided, just to give council an idea of how much the contribution fund builds on an annual basis. So it's any, it's the past, let's see, from the past four years, an average of about six thousand dollars comes into the contribution fund on um, an annual basis. And then the last page provided to council was a guide for cities regarding um, spending of the contribution monies and and what items are um, lawful uses for those monies. So as we discussed, the the Legion's request does meet all of the criteria and qualifications for those monies. I wanted council to have visibility to the fund balance, um, previous expenses and our contributions, and then what we've provided thus far, just to give um, an idea for uh, further discussion regarding the Legion's request.
Questions, comments, motions?
You said it was eight thousand six hundred and something was the original request?
Eight thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. Uh, the city has contributed around thirty-two hundred, three thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars, that's an approximate, uh, based on wages and hours and and uh, equipment hours and our engineering services. The difference between the two is about fifty-five hundred dollars between what we contributed and what the request was.
Yes, Chris?
I guess if I look at this, um, for what they're asking and for what we've already contributed, I would um. My opinion would be to to um, give them fifty-five hundred dollars, that's the difference, that's what um, their request is and what we've already um, given to them through our services and employee services and city um, equipment.
Is that a motion?
Uh, I I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second on that motion?
Seconded up.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Holes, carried. Next, we have city ordinance, Moose Lake City Ordinance Amendment Discussion. City Administrator?
Yes, so um, the, in the past weeks, the city has been notified by residents of um, experiences being had in the community. Those notifications sparked internal engagement from an administrative perspective. We've had staff engaging with those community members in discussions regarding um, what those experiences were, and then as they pertain to our city ordinances. What, you know, the responsibility of the city is to make sure that the ordinance are meeting the needs of the community and are effective, are effective and enforceable as well. The effectiveness and enforceability have been prioritized, uh, we immediately engaged in uh, research for other ordinances of similar nature in other communities. We've also engaged with the Carlton County Sheriff's Office on the matter and the Carlton County Attorney's Office as well. So we are working in the background to make sure that our ordinances meet the needs of the community. What was presented to uh, the city council is just for visibility and discussion purposes. These identified ordinances, there are, I believe, five um, separate that were included in the packet. Some proposed changes have been highlighted, um, those are the identified needs that have come forward based on dialogue. However, uh, that we are not at the final phase of this, so what needs to occur moving forward is um, having city attorney review of some of the um, modifications or recommendations. Just to make sure that um, they can be upheld and that it's the best way to approach the situation. And we need to have further dialogue with the county attorney's office and the county, um, Carlton County Sheriff's Office regarding enforcement and what that looks like. And the process that the city can engage in to make sure that they are enforceable. For example, um, the nuisance ordinance and and noise violations have been um, a topic that has uh, been uh, highly discussed in recent weeks. What we've looked at doing is um, adding quiet hours into the ordinance to just define specific timeframes for enforceability. Or for enforcement, that has been aligned with the county's quiet hours stated uh, within, you know, county ordinance. And also aligning with other city ordinances like the short-term rental vacation um, section of the zoning ordinance and things like that. So, uh, what council received was a recommend, you know, recommendation that will be vetted throughout city process here, that would include the um, establishment of quiet hours within that ordinance. And then the other mechanism there is a way to um, define sound and sound levels. And initial discussions are what was presented within the council packet, talks about um, you know, distance away, a fifty-foot distance away. As far as some type of mechanism to measure um, outdoor sound. And then defining what is a loud noise and what is unnecessary noises or vibrations as well. So we're working through the language, uh, we are um, definitely listening to community uh, input and feedback in this process, but then also doing our due diligence on our end to make sure that uh, we're we're um, utilizing the resources that we have to increase the effectiveness and enforcement of our ordinances as well. So if uh, council has any questions, open to dialogue right now, um, what will have to occur moving forward is um, vetting some of these highlighted changes that were included in the packet. With our our legal team and then um, presenting a, an official amendment um, to council. As part of the public hearing um, and um, amendment, ordinance amendment process as well.
Questions, Chris?
Well, first of all, I guess I would like to see that um, quiet hours extended, at least on the morning side, because I wouldn't wanna be woke up at seven A M with what's going on now. I mean, at least eight o'clock, um, I mean, that would be good, but it's push that out to at least eight o'clock. And if they've got residents that are, what, one hundred seventy-five, one hundred fifty feet away that are getting this, I mean, fifty feet is just the neighbor, so um. I guess we have to see how far we can push that to.
Well, it would be, it would be fifty, within fifty feet, so anything outside of fifty feet would.
Would be a violation.
Oh, okay. A violation, yeah.
So the neighbor at fifty feet going this way wouldn't have any recourse?
No, radius, so a radius of fifty feet.
Or more.
Or more.
It's a violation.
Yep, so it's establishing the initial perimeter.
Just worried that if it's forty-nine feet that, you know.
Understood, so we looked at decibels, um, in our discussions with our law enforcement partners, are, there are really strict um, guidelines for enforcement of of decibels. You have to be trained, you have to have equipment that's certified, you, there are, there are things that have to be in place from a decibel reading um, mechanism in order for that to be enforceable. And that's not something that is um, available at this time. What other cities have done, which is what research um, alluded to, is a distance. Because distance can be measured um, relatively easy versus using some type of um, decibel mechanism for sound. Also, uh, including vibrations and specifics to what are unnecessary noise was important, because the the ordinance as it reads now is very vague. And so, trying to cover all those bases with any modifications that are being uh, recommended for amendment. I just wanna be clear too, the ten P M to seven A M aligns with other quiet hours we already have established and with the Carlton County uh, noise guidelines as well. So if we're, if we're, if we are deviating, I just wanna be clear that then we are in misalignment with other ordinances that we have as well.
Maybe we need to look at them too, um, I just think seven A M is is um, pretty early. I I really feel for you guys, cause I I can't imagine. Living in that kind of situation, so we need to do something and.
We do, what we need, we need, we know we need to have, we're, we have to define what we're looking at doing too.
Yeah, but I I.
It's not gonna be a super quick process, but.
What, um, so as these calls are coming in and the Sheriff's Department is responding, she's just, what, turning the equipment down or off or so, has she been ticketed or anything yet, as of yet?
Kelly, can you come up?
I can address that.
Please.
Yes, she has, there have been several citations that have been issued already, um, has not, um, before a judge or had any resolution to them yet, but um, there have been citations issued. And we are doing everything that we can, I mean, I do feel for you guys too, I really do, and I know the deputies do, it's just these are very challenging, especially when, like, we have certain things that are very easy. Drunk driving, oh, you're a, wait, whatever, whatever, you're drunk, you're going to jail, that is very easy. Stuff like this is a little bit harder to deal with and enforce, um, and the ordinance, you know, that was problematic. Who probably defined unnecessary noise, because what's unnecessary to me is probably different to everybody in this whole room right now, so. Trying to get those pieces and make sure that whatever we are enforcing doesn't get tossed out, because that isn't gonna help anybody either, um, if it if it does go through the legal process and ends up being thrown out of court.
Another question I guess I have is, um, so some of these seem like they're harassing, can they do something civilly, go to?
So, and I think they've all, I can't speak for all of them, cause I only talk to a couple, but I think they've all been made aware of a harassment restraining order process and how they would go about obtaining that through the court, that is not through our office, but um, I think they've all been made aware of it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just like them to know what D is in the, on that ordinance, because they showed up here, I, have they, this is the first time they've seen it. I know it hasn't gone to our attorney, but this is what's being brought forth.
Right, so I mentioned um, uh, the implementation of quiet hours, so um, outdoor sound that can be heard above conversation over fifty feet away during quiet hours, ten P M to seven A, unless um, caused by a city permitted event. So trying to build in like a city permit process for exclusions or very, you know, variances from um, the standard or the normal. Um, and again, this verbiage is not official, we're just, we're in that process of of working through it. Any louder unnecessary noises or vibrations, including but not limited to. Any louder unnecessary noises or vibrations, including but not limited to shouting, rioting, loud music, electronically amplified noise, or disorderly conduct which disturbs another person in the vicinity of said dwelling or building. And since providing this, we've talked about how even utilizing another person needs to be, needs to be modified. A lot of what is being utilized for citing right now, if I'm understanding correctly, is state statute. And state statute is also vague. And so we are, we are trying to make sure that if we're going to engage in this process that we're doing it the right way and that it's not something that can have holes poked in it. Nothing is perfect, but we want to do our due diligence on it. So even from what I'm reading right now, there will most likely be changes before it comes forward to council, but we'll go through the public hearing process for an amendment. And the communication today was just that we engaged immediately, we're going to continue to engage, and the ordinances are the city's involvement in the matter. There's law enforcement involvement, there is, you know, civil court, and then we, you know, have our ordinances from the city perspective and we have our partnership with law enforcement. So doing what we can in the background is important and that we are actively engaging.
I could just add one more thing.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to, and I know that they have also been told this, but I know it feels frustrating, like, oh, nothing's being done and we are trying to do something, but I still encourage everyone to call 911 and report it because if it's not reported to us, it's like it never happened as far as when we bring it maybe in front of the judge saying, hey, look at this is what we got. So I still would encourage that to continue, even though, you know, we clearly can't bust the door down and drag people out for playing loud music, but, you know, we're doing what we can moving forward and the more information we have, the more times it's reported, that bolsters the case.
So what will trigger the penalties? Seems like penalties usually get people's attention.
So we've talked about in our, in our coordination meetings with the sheriff's office and the county attorney identifying the fines and making sure that the fines and penalties are clearly defined within the ordinance. And then those need to essentially be not registered, but essentially reported to the state court system to then be able to be cited and enforced from the sheriff's office perspective. So we're going to continue to engage on that side of things as well.
Some housekeeping things. And again, the challenge with some of these is a large population will turn the reason down when they're asked by a neighbor and even larger when a uniform shows up. And then when they get a citation, that usually gets the attention, but there are some that that doesn't work either. So unfortunately, we're at that point right now where we're still trying to figure out what that is that is going to get the attention so that the neighborhood can house these.
Any other questions?
If any questions come up or upon, you know, additional review, please feel free to let me know. We're going to carry on with our process internally and then have an official amendment, ordinance amendment recommendation through a public hearing process for council to review and potentially adopt.
Can you get the other office to respond?
And the ordinance issue too is the weakest link that we have. So if you are being harassed and get a harassment order, the violation of that has criminal repercussions where we're dealing with the ordinance, it's going to be a $5,000, $100 fine. So I think the more people that understand that you're being violated, get in front of a judge, get the harassment order, and that gives law enforcement actually something above that we can do because we're going to have first reading, second reading, third reading of this ordinance. Once it goes to the attorneys, comes back to us, we could be looking at September. Just keep that in mind. So your immediate protection is a harassment order.
And that is the ordinance. One of the main ordinance we're looking at, but there are a few others out there that were looking at amendment too, but that was the main two orders. Any other questions on ordinances? Next, we'll be on Independence School District 97, First National Bank, the real lease agreement. You guys can leave if you're welcome to stay or you can leave.
Thank you.
Okay, just a quick synopsis of this. It's time to renew the lease with the school district, mostly school district in regards to the lease to the arena. We have done so without giving actual figures. We did increase the lease amount roughly $13,000 and we shortened it from a five-year lease to a three-year lease. So they've been great to collaborate with. They got really creative with how they're going to fund this and all was good and signed up on as far as their part, which leads us to our part. And then there are some other minor modifications like titles and stuff like that in the lease agreement, like minor, very minor things. Any questions on that?
Sorry, we are looking for a motion to approve this.
We are, yep, and then we'll need some signatures.
Have we done a review of the cost hourly to run, what costs to run, have ice, electricity? I don't know if we've ever done a review of that.
We haven't recently that I'm aware of, and we did just put in new compressors too, which is probably something we should look at, yep.
Sure.
An audit on the cost just keeping.
Yeah, because it's nice to have, no, that we're getting 13,000 more, but we're losing 60,000 a year, which is kind of.
Any other comments or motions?
Any recommendations that we could approve?
What's that?
The recommendation is that we approve this?
Yeah, it's quite a big jump from where they were at, so we, you know, we pushed as much as we could, I think.
I'll make a motion we approve the lease agreement with this Independence School District.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All favor? Opposed? Carry. Next, we have the Short Allen Henderson Incorporated, Highway 73 Phase 2 Trail Project, a letter of recommendation.
So on June 5th, the bid opening occurred regarding the last phase of the trail project, or Highway 73 Phase 2 Trail Project. The lowest bid was $598,733.43. The highest bid was $902,380.75. The city engineers have engaged with Carlton County, who is the fiscal agent for this project based on all of the grant monies involved. They have made a recommendation to award the low bidder Senate Contracting LLC in the amount of $598,733.43. There is a contingency recommended and that is contingent upon approval from Minda Office of Civil Rights and Carlton County. So we'll go before the county board as well. The contingency is important because there was one line item within their bid that didn't align with the requirement of the Minda Office of Civil Rights and they are currently working that out. And so right now we're looking for approval to the lowest bidder with the contingency highlighted in the second to last sentence on the recommendation letter.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further comments? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Lift station inspection discussion.
Let's start at the top. Okay, so this has been kind of a hot topic for a couple of years now. A couple of you may not be too familiar with some of these past conversations we've had. Our biggest concern, we do have seven lift stations in town, our biggest concern is a main lift station, $650,000 now from this Monday. There are parts and components of that, thank you Taylor, that need to be replaced. A year and a half ago, I stood up here, told you guys the replacement options were like $400,000 that we do not have. I think I actually had the support to do that and I didn't believe we should, and so I didn't try. Some of these trainings that I go to and some of these things we see, we pump in a new vendor, new vendors come on the market, found a new vendor who can actually offer a replacement and a repair for us to the tune of $13,000 per wall. So 40 grand for the whole station, which is way better than what we were originally thinking. In your packet, starting on page 124, there is lift station, lift station calibration records and lift station check records in here. My biggest one is still a main lift station. From our last communication about this, we went from $400,000 to about $40,000 right now. I just want that to sink in for a month or two. I don't need anything done right now. Nothing is broken right now. What I would like to see happen, I would recommend we order an impeller and wear ring because they're all, that one impeller and one wear ring will fit all three pumps in the main lift station. Doesn't matter what font, they're all universal. I'd like to have those parts on the shelf. They're, they're out about a month. So when a pump fails, we call the pump company, they fix it day of, put it back in the hole, we order new parts, we're out very little time instead of waiting two, three months to have the backup online. Like I said, I don't need anything to happen tonight. I would like to see something happen in July as far as some movement, whether we get some parts coming, that kind of thing. To go from 400 to 40,000, it's a big deal. So it's huge. That's it in a nutshell.
Yep, one thing that Phil and I are going to do in the background of course in the next month is just take a look at the budget. This is something that we should build in on an annual basis as far as at least monies for one set to make sure that we continuously have budgeted enough to have on hand for repairs. I think awareness from the perspective of, you know, Superintendent Etter has continued to try and engage in new dialogue, new vendors, new opportunities regarding the city's infrastructure, and that's been invaluable. So just without that type of engagement, we don't know that there are other options out there, that people are trying new things, or there's other equipment available. And so as eye-opening as it was, I also want to highlight that that activity is continuously happening in the background and it's going to save the city a significant amount of money. So good news, we're going to do some budget work in the background. We'll bring forward some proposals for council review in July, but good news, it's also a little scary that if you don't ask questions and don't continue to engage, you could be stuck replacing with new and the outcome is thousands of dollars. So it's just a reminder for us to continue to, you know, knock on doors and ask questions.
We're talking about the entire, the lower end of the pumps, so the lifts, wearings, impellers, everything electrical from the midline up is totally fine. That's in the report, they checked out, no problem. Yes, the budget to replace, absolutely, especially to at least have a pair or one or a pair or all three on the shelf. So when they do decide to give up, we can fix them immediately instead of a month later. We played that game when I first got here for many, many years and that was, that was nuts. And I'm not playing the game right now. And so. Yes.
What is, just says wear on impeller and wear ring. What is wear to you?
Wear to me is 50% gone. 50% is like expectancy's now. And we are there.
Okay, so is this something that getting a pair of this or having this on the shelf before July would be a good thing?
You know, I've been told by one vendor that I, that they're gonna, they're gonna give up and that was two years ago. So of course, I'm a firm believer of especially parts like this, running them until they fail if we have ones on the shelf. If you guys want to make a motion tonight for that, I am all in and I, I love it. I just wanted you guys to, last time we had this conversation, we went, we went from $400,000 to now and we all walked out of here with holy cow, how are we going to pay for this?
Well, my feeling is if it's a month out to get something like that.
It's two months.
Why, why would we wait another month when it's showing 50% and, you know?
That looks like $11,460, right?
It's going to be $13,460.
13?
With, including the labor.
We would pay the labor yet.
No, we wouldn't pay the labor.
We're just buying the ring and the impeller.
That's correct.
Yeah, we're just talking about getting the.
Yes, I'm sorry, let me guess, the $11,460.
I guess I would like to see them sitting on a shelf now rather than later because at 50%, you know.
I agree with that. I thought the same thing.
You know, 50% could go to zero like overnight.
I could agree with you more, absolutely.
So I guess I will make a motion that we purchase the impeller and wear ring right now and for future use and then you guys continue your talk about how we're going to put this in budget for, but at least have one on the shelf to protect us.
Be ready to go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Would these work in the other lift stations or would we just want for the main?
This is just the main, yep. The other ones I'm not as worried about. Those we have, we have tricks of the trade to bypass if need be. It's not ideal, but it is approved in certain situations. This we do not. When this goes down, it's bad for everyone.
Any other discussion?
It would like it was more than one pump.
Three pumps we have in the hole.
Yes.
Yep, yep. So this is to repair just one. So.
What would the chances be that they all blow out one pump?
Not great, not great. And we have, when one fails, we have two more in the hole for that reason. So I wouldn't, if you want, absolutely, but we all know the situation, the storefront is in financially. I, I think one set is a wonderful step forward for it.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Beach House Electrical Works.
Yeah, so the Beach House is capital project for 2025. It is moving on very nicely. It is probably, it's over 75, it's probably 80% right now complete. And that's going to be a huge asset to us down the park. One part of that is the electrical work that we wanted to do in that building. On page 137, you'll find a start of two boats, one for Men's Electric for $7,500. Every page is about that. You will find a boat for Regional Electric over $6,400 for the same work. Just need a motion to go for that.
Motion, questions, comments? Do you have a recommendation?
When we have the ability to go to stay local and save money, absolutely 100%. It's cheaper. And save money, you bet.
So you want region?
Yep.
Make a motion to go with a regional electric for $6,400.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Cap Club Attending Hiring Approval. Whole batting cage. Whole Rock Club batting cage discussion.
Yes, so the president of the Home Line Club approached the city with a request to install batting cages at two different locations, one at Twilight Ball Field and one at the Little League Field. The maps in the packet have the locations identified with orange rectangles.
Uh, the maps in the packet have the locations identified with orange rectangles. Um, also in the packet was an example. Um, they are actually looking to utilize some other resources in the community to establish batting cages. Um, the Home Run Club will be, um, covering the entire cost of the batting cages. They came to city staff and also it went through the park board regarding, um, a recommendation and potential approval of batting cages. So the final step is now city council. Um, again, this would be at no cost, and they are continuing to engage and improve, um, the facilities um, and, and using their monetary contributions to do so. So it's really been a good partnership.
Comments, discussion, good, Chris?
Um, we would not be responsible for any damage to these if it occurs. Um, just knowing where the one is with people at the school making all that, or the old school making all that damage, we would be, if these got damaged, we're not held liable to fix them.
No, we, so they're on city property. All the property is covered by city insurance. Um, however, what the partnership that we currently have established with them, anything that's happened to the, to the facilities that they're utilizing, they have covered in the past.
Any other comments?
I have a question. The first one on one thirty, it was pretty tall. We just had to pay a bunch of money for a flight that was donated to the city for engineering costs. Those poles look pretty tall. Would we be required to have engineering going to do any of this work? And someone's just doing the work.
So those are examples of visuals, um, not going to be what is actually constructed. This is what was provided to us for dialogue regarding general concept. Um, they have talked about utilizing, um.
Some additional poles that they have.
Some additional poles that they already have, um, and have had access to through water and light to suck.
I'm not sure where.
So working at the community and collaborating, uh, the Home Run Club has already established poles and whatnot. Those are visuals that were provided for examples.
Any other questions, comments, their motion?
I'll make a motion if they approve that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Just start insurance, just to make sure that the city administrator said it covered under the insurance. So I'm sure there's a clause in there that.
Yeah, the holes is a question.
Or somebody gets hurt.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Oh, Camp Row Lieutenant Hire Approval.
Yes, we are in need of one additional Camp Row Lieutenant. We hired, um, or we hired, we interviewed John Jumpers last week, uh, very well. That is our recommendation to city council for hire.
Make a motion, we hire Mr. Jumpers, the Camp Row Lieutenant?
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Harry Hunt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Uh, Moose Lake Area Chamber of Commerce Temporary Out Sale Liquor License to brew this.
Uh, yes, um, one change from what was included in the packet is upon review, um, notice that the date of the event listed on the application was incorrect. We did contact the executive director, Michelle Anderson of the chamber, and have now received a new, um, permit application with July nineteenth, twenty twenty-five being listed as the, um, date of the event. And so all is well there. Um, this is, um, an annual event now. Um, it continues to be. It's changed locations. There's never been an issue from the city perspective.
Comments, concerns, motions?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Uh, Moose Lake Brew Company Temporary Out Sale Liquor License for Moose Lake Buzz Game, uh, July twenty-eighth.
Yeah, so, uh, exciting news. Uh, the Moose Lake Buzz is the City of Moose Lake's semi-pro baseball team. Their home games have been scheduled at the City of Moose Lake Old, uh, Baseball Field, High School Field. And that's where their home games are played. They asked the brewery to come down and sell beers, uh, on a specific game that's in front of you on the, the request. And part of the proceeds will go back in form of a donation from the brewery to the semi-pro Moose Lake Buzz team, um, to help them be successful and keep going and growing and stuff like that. So that's what that's all about.
And is this date correct?
I do not, I would not know.
Cause I believe it is six twenty-eighth, sir, you didn't, cause their season ends before seven. So I don't know.
I would not know the date.
Before six twenty-eight. That's why I'm assuming it's in front of us.
Now, is that two of them coming with the parties? Maybe a couple of them.
Yeah.
My only concern is we have houses right there and the timeline, and should we be talking to the neighbors about having alcoholic beverages being sold right next to their home? What, we haven't done this before. It was always a school. We're in a residential neighborhood. I, I'm just plain devil's advocate of what, you know, all of a sudden we have little kids running down there, people are drinking beer.
Yep, I think, you know, ideally this would go for the park board first as well. So, um, I think maybe just a breakdown in process if the, I'm not sure if Moose Lake Buzz was aware and how it all worked out, and it was just kind of a last minute type thing.
I know it's happening quickly, and it's great to have it here. I just noticed like that three hundred people.
So tell me a little bit more about this buzz, buzz thing.
It's a semi-pro baseball team, uh, for the City of Moose Lake, so.
Basically a town team.
Yep.
Similar dome.
There's some.
Southern Minnesota's, they're more prevalent. Hankley has one, Ogilvy has one.
And they're semi-pro?
Well, it's a town, it's a town. The semi-pro sounds great.
Okay.
They do classify, I mean, they're on the website for, you know.
But it's just a town baseball.
So it's a tournament?
That's a league. They're in a league, yeah.
Yeah, there's a paper about that.
I'd recommend just, yeah, look it up.
What are you gonna try out?
I'd like to talk to people who are their thirties, early thirties, have to go pass.
That's my only concern is that I, I would really like the residents we talk to, and I'm, I'm for this. I just don't want to start something wrong.
So. Correct me if I'm wrong, so is it Mishawas that will be serving?
Could be the brewery.
Okay. So what's, is there?
I think. What are the games played there?
Yeah, baseball.
I think that's all the way to there.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with, um, Congressman Jenin that, um, since this is also in the neighborhood of where the other issues are going on with the noise and, um, that would be prudent to maybe, uh, send them the letter, sure.
Is this, is this activity you're requesting from the city perspective? Or that we go back and, and talk to the, the leader, the event staff, or the brewery who's serving? What is your mindset on what you'd like to see happen moving forward?
Well, I'd like to have the neighbors be told that, you know, we have this town league here, and, um, they are requesting an application to serve alcoholic beverages and beer during the event. Please give us your input and talk to anybody that's been a couple of block radius of the. That's just, and I don't know if we can do that even, but I, I'm just saying it's an alcohol permit in a residential area. I don't know how often we've done that.
I think that I, the concerns are extremely valid. I just want clear direction.
I, I know.
Are we door, are we door knocking?
I don't leave the load in at the city park or. But, and that is probably considered part of the city park, but, you know, I'm not saying I'm for it against it. I'm just, you know.
Would, would it just be prudent to send that, um, Seventh Street block facing the, and maybe the people that are back, the rats to the thing? Just a letter just stating that this will be occurring? Just to give them, just a warning that it's happening and, I mean.
Even if, uh, a discussion on door knocking just on those, those two streets, and we could make this contingent upon, I guess, no negative feedback from them, otherwise we'd have to hold it off a month. Who's better be?
Door.
That's what I'm trying.
Well, so is this event?
Yeah, my, my only concern is, is I believe it's for six twenty-eight, which their purpose for seven twenty-eight.
Yeah, I mean, if it's.
Because I don't believe they have games going out late, cause their playoffs start July twentieth. So, you know, I think they just put the wrong date on there.
Uh, they do have a game versus from, uh, June twenty-eighth to a club element Moose Lake.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm assuming it's the wrong date.
I mean, I think the best thing would be if, yes, we could door knock and ask everybody, but I, I guess just if it's a time constraint, just doing the, um, the appropriate approach, giving them just the, um, that the event is happening, there'll be alcohol being served. Um, you know, when will, what time will it be finished? Starts at two, will be finished by, you know, such and such a time and, um, you know.
Yeah, information would be fine too.
Just give them information and if they, you know.
Starts at two, and maybe we put a contingent, they have to be done by seven, or they can't serve after.
Yeah.
Sure.
Seven, or.
We can do that.
Yeah.
It'd be easier if we get negative feedback, then we'll have to revisit it.
Yes.
But I think knowledge is, is important for them.
And mostly, like I said, it's a two-way now, um, for us to.
Absolutely.
Then that's gonna cause a lot of noise and, um, it'd be prudent for us to send out a letter to them.
And I know, and I know they had a game last weekend down there.
Oh, okay, so they.
But they didn't have the al. As far as I know, they didn't have alcohol, but, and I didn't have any negative feedback from.
Now, they cleared out pretty badly.
So there, so there has been games.
They had a double header last weekend.
Yeah, I guess just say that there will be alcohol served and, and.
Please come to the next city council meeting if there's an issue, or give us your feedback.
Is there, is there a motion with all this?
So this will be beer served, something?
It's the brewery, so they'll be.
That might be important, I don't know that. It would make a difference to some people, but maybe some would.
Yeah, I guess I'd make that motion and approve it with, I guess, the confirmation of the date, like you.
Confirmation of the date.
And then we just reach out, let, let them know that they could come here and put an end, end time on it.
Sure.
Is there a second?
Seventh Street?
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
Um, extent of notification. You want Seventh Street and the next?
I think the, the, is that back the?
Full parking lot.
It's still in the east side. Yeah, yeah.
Phil, do you know which ones they are?
Uh-huh.
I don't think they're all here.
Negative, Ghost Rider.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Um, next we will have to go into closed session to discuss the, how do I say it? Threatened litigation and a request for arbitration. The agenda item for this portion of the regular meeting is to discuss legal strategy regarding threatened, threatened litigation and requests for arbitration received by the City of Moose Lake, by the city from the Moose Lake, Wind River area sanitary district, sewer district. Portion, this portion of the meeting will be closed pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero five, subdivision three, P, under the attorney client privilege exception to Minnesota, to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. The city needs for confidentiality always the purposes served by the open meeting law in the, and in this case, based on the following. Absolute confidentiality is necessary so that the city council and legal council can have a candid and open discussion to determine available, available legal options to handle threatened litigation, including arbitration, general litigation strategy, and possible areas of resolution. The purpose of the closed meeting is not to make a decision behind closed doors, but instead is to determine all legal options for handling the band, the demand for arbitration and threatened litigation. The only business to be discussed in this meeting is the demand for arbitration and threatened litigation. An open session would be detrimental because it may take place in the presence of an individual's involved in a threatening, threatened litigation. A closed session would benefit the public because the ultimate outcome of the threatened litigation may impact the finances of the city. I will now entertain a motion to close this portion of the meeting.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.